Good evening, we'll call the Tuesday, June 5th, 2018 meeting of the Everett Planning Commission, beginning with the roll call, please.
Chair Holland.
Here.
Commissioner Tisdale.
Here.
Commissioner Zalinski.
Here.
Commissioner LaVera.
Here.
Commissioner Yonosak.
Here.
Commissioner McGinn.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
First item of business is the minutes from the May 15th, 2018 meeting. Is there any comments, corrections, or motions?
I approve to approve.
Second.
Okay, call for the roll.
Commissioner Dunn.
Abstain.
Commissioner McGinn. Commissioner Yonosak.
Yes.
Commissioner LaVera.
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale.
Yes.
Chair Holland.
Yes. Any reports from the commissioners this evening? Commissioner Dunn?
Yeah, so the tree committee met on May 17th and we reviewed the Metro Everett Plan and will be sending a comment letter with a summary of comments in the coming weeks.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other reports? Seeing none. Any staff comments this evening?
No staff report, other than agenda items tonight.
Great. Well, this is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the Planning Commission on anything that's not on the agenda this evening. If so, please come forward now. Seeing none. Well, we have one item tonight, which has eight parts, so I'll turn it over to staff, and it's a public hearing this evening on Metro Everett.
Thank you, Alan Giffen, Planning Director. I'll start with a little bit of an overview and introduction, and then I'll hand it off to David for the heavy lifting tonight. He's been doing most of the heavy lifting through this process, he and his staff, who are, several of whom are here tonight as well. So I'd like to thank staff for a lot of hard work over the last couple of years. The city adopted the 10-year update to the comprehensive plan in October of 2015, and in that plan, we have some extremely high-growth targets for population, housing, and jobs. And those targets are much higher than if we had just taken the trends that we have witnessed for the last 20 or 30 years and have just projected those in a straight line. So that means that we have to do, if we're going to hit those targets, we're going to have to do some pretty intensive planning to figure out how and where to encourage and allow for growth. Under the regional growth strategy, Vision 2040, the population target for Everett for the year 2035 is 165,000. That's about 55,000 over what we were in our official population total for 2017. And our growth target for jobs is 140,000 jobs, which is about 40,000 more than we had in 2015. And since Everett has very little vacant land for development, most of our growth is going to have to come in the form of redevelopment. That means taking areas that are already developed, tearing down buildings, and building something newer and bigger in its place. During the conference of plan update process, the public encouraged us to have, or to grow in areas such as downtown, the residential areas surrounding the downtown, the Everett Station area, arterial transit corridors such as Broadway, Evergreen Way, Everett Mall Way, and in the southwest Everett industrial area. Most of the other residential neighborhoods that are built out, there was public support for leaving most of those areas alone. And Vision 2040 requires local jurisdictions to prepare subarea plans for growth centers like Metro Everett. And so, in the 2015 comp plan, that is what we said we would do, and soon after the plan was adopted, that process started. The size of centers are supposed to be fairly compact, about a square mile roughly in geography. The Metro Everett Plan and regulations that we're proposing and bringing forward tonight for public hearing encourage significant growth and with revised development standards, high-quality growth within the Metro Everett area. So David will briefly describe a little bit more of the background and the info in your packet, and we look forward to hearing from the public tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. David Stellheim, Long Range Planning Manager, and I'd also like to thank some of the staff, in particular, Neil Stigerson, who's been the project manager, kind of keeping things rolling. His knowledge of the existing code and the standards and stuff like that has been really instrumental to us drafting what's really a package before you tonight for a public hearing that's quite large in its breadth. You know, we talk about off-street parking citywide and the reduction of zones and things like that that we're doing is quite comprehensive, and to have someone with the knowledge there has been very helpful. Also, David Tyler's been working on Chapter 34, the parking stuff, and then Karen Stewart has been instrumental in providing some of the information for us. So, but I also want to thank the Planning Commission. You've been through, I think, about 20 of these work sessions so far. So you've been through this, and you'll probably see the light at the end of the tunnel and ready for the next subject as well. We're ready with you. So tonight, before you, you do have a public hearing for the Planning Commission. It is on, there are eight different actions. The way something is as comprehensive as this is, there's eight different actions. The first two are planning-related. So the first is adoption of the Metro Everett Subarea Plan, so a document that you've received, which is, I'm surprised no one caught it yet, but it says May 8th, 2017 on the front cover. Michael's laughing he caught it. So I wish someone would have caught it earlier. I caught it the other day, a little mistake. That was May 8th, 2018. But in there, several chapters, including background information, but policies and actions on land use, transportation, housing, historic resources, urban design, economic opportunities, environment, parks, and open space. As part of adoption of the Metro Everett Plan, it requires us to amend our existing plan as well for consistency purposes. So the second action is amendment of the citywide comprehensive plan, and actually the first includes the repeal of the downtown plan and Everett Station Plan, because the metro area covers that. Then we get into the meat of the development regulations. We have new development regulations to implement the plan. Action number three actually includes two new chapters to the zoning code, Chapter 19, which is the Metro Everett uses, and Chapter 20 are the development standards for Metro Everett in the core residential area. The fourth action is new off-street parking regulations citywide, repealing the existing chapter. And then Numbers 5 and 6 are really amendments to the various codes and titles throughout the Everett Municipal Code to address the consistency and coordination with those other two chapters. Action number seven is the local project review procedures, including an action to have a final plat signature, authority, and notice for subdivisions, some changes there based on state law. And finally, action number eight is to amend the categorical exemptions for infill development in Metro Everett. So we presented the whole packet to you at your previous meeting three weeks ago, so you've had that for a bit of time. Since then, we've had a few things that have come up, including some public input, but we haven't been able to necessarily prepare responses to all the input since then. But there's a couple things. So there's three items in the memo that I sent to you on dated May 30th. The first is to look at some changes perhaps in the medical clinics and social services. Right now, we have a prohibition on medical clinics on the ground floor of the transit-oriented development or pedestrian streets, and similarly prohibition on that for social or human services. After talking about this with the mayor's office, we'd like to have you look at prohibition on the ground floor of all streets as part of this amendment process. The second item had to do with ceiling heights, and this is what Commissioner Zalinski had pointed out, was just the diagram, and the words didn't match each other, so it's a little housekeeping thing. And then the third item is comprehensive plan land use map, Figure 6. At the time that we presented to you, we didn't have the actual map prepared to show how the Metro Plan fits within the overall plan, and so no substantive changes, but that's, that needs some housekeeping in there. We've also provided you with two other documents. We did adopt an addendum to the final EIS for the 2015 comprehensive plan update to comply with our State Environmental Policy Act requirements. And we also completed a development capacity analysis, and so the technical report is provided to you. Since that time, and we'll get into the public testimony, but there are several letters that we have gotten, or emails so far into the record. One from Marty Bradley this afternoon, June 5th. One from Tom Erlichman. I should say what they're about. So the first one, Marty Bradley, this is in the Norton Grand Historic Area. Tom Erlichman about a request for Mr. Bargreen, Parking Area A, down off of West Marine View Drive, request for that. An email from Stephen Fessler, and it has to do with building heights and parking. A letter from the Snoomish County PUD about some of the challenges with putting infrastructure in within a growing metropolitan area. A letter from Everett Bike Walk dated June 5th about bicycle standards within the plan. A letter from a couple different folks, Brent Harris and Extrum Industries, because this one's new to me, too, Craig Crassin, Brent Harris, and Sherri Cloud. And this has to do with Pine Street area and some zoning in that area. And an email from Greg Benson regarding historic area. And a letter from Rick Lipinski asking for the metro boundary to be expanded across West Marine View Drive for his property. And email and letter from Mary Burke Dean regarding the Norton Grand Historic Overlay. And there's still a couple more. One from the Master Builders on June 5th regarding some policy recommendations. And then one that made it into your packet was from the Everett Station District Alliance, I believe. So, and then Neil's had also compiled all the letters and a matrix from things we've gotten over the last two years is also as part of your record. So. There's any questions at this time? Otherwise, we're ready for public input ourselves.
Thank you, David. Any questions to staff prior to hearing from the public? Commissioner Zalinski?
I just have one question regarding one of the comments that was made by the Everett Station District Alliance. They questioned the housing goal, H1. It talked about a housing target of 1,000 units. But I noticed that in the land capacity information that you included in our package, you note that a target, or you identify as a target, something on the order of 9,500 new housing units between now and the end of the planning period, I presume. And so I'm just wondering if that's a discrepancy, just an apparent discrepancy?
It's not a discrepancy. The goal of 1,000 market-rate housing units is for the next six or seven years. That is different than a 20-year growth planning target or housing target. The housing target is much higher than that in order to comply with our growth targets within the overall comprehensive plan. But the statement that was referenced in the Everett Station District Alliance was taken out of the plan, was something that is more of a short-term action.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Dunn?
What is the plan for staff for following up on some of these individual disputes on, like the Bargreens and the Junkets for concerns around the rezoning or zone changes?
Well, for both the Bargreen and the Jucket properties, we have recommended supporting their requests, so that would include both of them in the urban mixed zoning.
And is there a plan to follow up with all of those individual requests?
We can certainly talk with some of them, but I think part of that also is looking for feedback from the Planning Commission tonight about what you would like us to do with some of these requests. You may have preferences, you may have preferences for us to, you know, follow up, or in some cases, perhaps not. So we'll wait for direction from the commission.
Okay. Thank you.
When would we give you that input?
I would suggest after you conclude public testimony tonight.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, I guess we'll open up the public hearing this evening. If you do plan on testifying, please make sure to fill out one of these speaker sign-in sheets and provide it. Also, we have a lot of folks that want to speak tonight, so if you can kindly keep your comments to three minutes or less, that would be greatly appreciated. And we'll start with on the top here, which is Reed Shaki.
For the record, my name is Reed Shaki. I'm with Shaki Planning Group, business address 2716 Colby Avenue here in Everett. And I've got very brief testimony, but I do want to point out one apparent omission in your plan. I first started working on comprehensive plans in Everett 48 years ago, when I came to work for the city as a planner. So I think I qualify as a historic site. So, if you could note that for the record. But I do want to congratulate you. This is a lot of hard work by your staff and the commission, and this is an exciting time for Everett. And I think the Metro Everett Plan has been very well-conceived, very well-designed, and I congratulate the staff and the commission. My specific purpose on being here tonight, I represent the Junkets, Russ and Jennifer, and they have a letter on the record over my letterhead. And as Alan mentioned, you did respond to it, and we noticed that the properties on Oaks Avenue, 3115, 3117, and 3119 Oaks have been recommended for addition to the urban mixed classification on your land use map. And we support that move, and we thank you for considering doing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll hobble back to my seat.
Greg Benson?
I'm Greg Benson. Our address, 3306 Norton Avenue, and I have a prepared statement. We moved to Norton and 33rd on Rucker Hill because we love the neighborhood, the beautiful old homes, often lovingly restored by homeowners, green space and history. Our daughter can ride her bike through the neighborhood like kids have for decades. We have parks, big trees for shade, and Forgotten Creek isn't so forgotten. It doesn't feel like we are easily walking distance to downtown. Everett agreed with us about the importance of maintaining the history of the area by creating three historic overlays. A notable phrase from the introduction in the Norton Grand Guidelines is, "The historic districts have the characteristics that we today define as vital to a livable neighborhood." The characteristic's vital to a livable neighborhood. That's what we want, a livable neighborhood. We don't feel replacing two-story craftsmen's with six-to-eight-story structures promotes a livable neighborhood. The consequences are academic. Increased traffic, reduced parking, loss of tree canopy, they're the obvious results. We spoke with planning folks at the recent Metro Everett Open House at the Transit Center. While somewhat relieved we are outside of the planned metro boundary on 33rd, the currently planned changes will certainly affect our livability and property values. Beyond the relaxing of height limits to six and eight stories, increased density due to micro housing will certainly diminish our livability and erode the history and cohesiveness of the neighborhood. We understand the need to increase housing opportunities in Everett and welcome increased retail and local services. This needs to happen outside of the historic overlays. For example, the area between Colby and Rucker is an easy extension to the downtown core. Tall buildings and offices are common there, and folks won't need to navigate Rucker to get to downtown. Livability is something we all want. The Everett Planning Commission, Everett Council have a fiduciary duty to provide the citizens with a livable community. Will our future parallel linwoods, where they have one historic building on a trailer moved around to accommodate developments, reject Metro Everett's encroachment on historic overlays? Thank you.
Thank you. James Dean?
Hi, I'm James Dean. I live at 3222 Grand Avenue, and I'm here speaking about the Metro Everett Subarea Plan with a couple of other caveats on top of that. I do live in the historic district, and part of the only historic district that ended up in the metro downtown area. There is a little sliver over here to the west, to the east, you know, of the other one, but somehow we managed to make this fit all the way around the Grand and Rucker Grand Historic Overlay. That's a concern of mine, and I'm not sure why that happened. The second concern that I have is, I worked, you know, 40-some years ago at Providence Hospital in Seattle, and there was a lady who wouldn't sell her property, but everything around it they sold. And so I watched as that hospital grew up around this one little house, and as the hospital went up around, and that one little house sat there, she continued to live there for the next 15, 20 years, sold it, finally turned it over to the hospital after she died. The problem there being is that I see that happening to the neighborhood here that we call historic, that we spent time, 18 years ago, to make it that way. And the reason why I say that is, if you look at eight-story buildings along Rucker that are faced to an alley of three-story houses, even though there's a hillside down there, those are going to stand three or four stories above those houses, right across an alley from those houses. Same thing happens if you go over to Nassau, and we put houses up there that are, I mean, buildings up there that are six stories high. They're, you know, it's three stories, but with an incentive, we'll make them six stories. And again, they're right across the alley from a house that's at the same grade, and so now we're looking at that canyon of houses up there. What happens to the historic nature of this canyon? And so that's a big concern that I have about. And the concern about the fact that, you know, though we pay attention to what's going on, there was no indication that we were going to include part of the historic overlay into the Metro Everett until just recently we found out. And so that concern about the communication that went along there. I know that we're in this process, going to put through some review procedures that change. And in that change of those review procedures, much more is going to be given to staff to do, and much less given in your hands to make a change when we complain or don't like what's going on. In that process, I know the city wants to grow, and I know we want to make sure that we've got all that we can, but unfortunately, we have to be careful about the fact that we end up getting a wonderful project that somebody came along with and wants to do, and now we have an eight-story building on 35th and Rucker that doesn't match anything that's in that area, and we're still looking down at parking, flat parking lots in downtown Everett. That's the kind of concern that I see in that development review process that we've got in place. And finally, as a leader of a social service agency that deals with homeless people, many of them who are addicted to drugs, I see very clearly in the social service, human service, metro area abolition of having any clinics on the first floor anywhere in that area, or social services as a travesty. It really is inappropriate for our community to do that. We have people here in need. They don't need to be hidden away from everybody else in this whole downtown area. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Dean?
I should have asked to be separated. Mary Dean, 3222 Grand Avenue. I wrote a very passionate letter, I think you all have it, chronicling from our house that was built in 1904 to all the work that we've put into it over the last 20 years. It was 20 years ago last Friday that I found this house in a neighborhood that looked pretty crispy around the edges, but I fell in love with the concept of being in a small community that I really believed cared about family. We were adopting a couple of our foster kids, and I wanted a safe, quality living home for them. And I almost canceled the deal when I drove three blocks north on Grand to see flat welding shop and a dilapidated building and police signs. And the irony is, is that some of that stuff is still there. That downtown core that everyone kept saying was going to get built up hasn't even happened, and yet all of a sudden, it seems to be important that the historic overlay that we put in place 18 years ago is, doesn't really have the teeth to save us. And I am really asking you to seriously, not, I'm asking you to consider stopping including the metro, the historic overlay in this Everett metro. I just think it's inappropriate. If we have used up all of our land in downtown Everett, and we really need to start doing some planned development south of Pacific, I understand that, because I echo what Jim says, we need affordable housing here, but it has to be in a planned way. And I just think there's so much more that needs to be done in downtown Everett to make this place a viable community here, a place that we can walk down the hill and come down here and go to a restaurant. It's even difficult to find a place to eat because restaurants are going out of business downtown. I'm not sure what the story is here. But I'm really hoping that between the city and the planning department, that there's can be some real concerted effort to make this a viable community here in the downtown core, and make it so that single families, a lot of whom have, there's a, folks just gave birth to a baby yesterday. They bought into this neighborhood across the street from us. If that change goes on Rucker, they could have, what I'm gathering here, I know it's five stories now, but it can't go any higher than that, or basically, they're going to be in a tunnel there, and they've just invested a lot to move into this neighborhood, along with several other families. So I'm really hoping that you'll take a step back here and work with us. We're thoughtful, caring people who love this town, and we love our community, and we really want that what happens on Rucker and Pacific and up along the historic overlay and up around Nassau is done in a thoughtful way so that people don't feel like they have to just throw up their hands and leave. Thank you.
Thank you. Paula Ryan?
Hi, my name's Paula Ryan. I live in the Portnoy Gardner neighborhood. I live on Grand between Pacific and 32nd. And to quote from the materials that you guys have provided, "The vision for Metro Everett is for an attractive, clean, and safe place for people to live." First on this list is attractive. There are two things that I can think of that are really unattractive. One, the vacant lots in the downtown core, and two, eight-story high-rises in the middle of a historic residential neighborhood. I'm here to voice my opposition to the increased height allowances in the proposed plan. An eight-story building, which would be one of the tallest buildings in town in the middle of a residential neighborhood, does not align with Metro Everett's stated goal of attractiveness. I'm asking the commission to keep allowed building heights at less than 55 feet and to require developers to blend heights in with the surrounding structures. I'm also here to voice my opposition to the microunit housing and the historic overlay Microunits make sense near Everett Community College, makes sense near the future light rail stop, but it doesn't make sense in a historic residential neighborhood. Last, I'm here to voice my support for providing, for incentivizing infill housing and multi-use developments in the downtown core. Vacant lots and dilapidated buildings should be revitalized first before looking to residential neighborhoods for growth. Once the downtown is bustling and vibrant space that it should be, then we can start looking outwards towards growth. I appreciate all the staff's hard work, I appreciate your guys' hard work, and I also appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Jean Rankin?
Hello, I'm Jean Rankin. I live at 32nd 27 Norton Avenue, and I bought a house back in 95 that needed a lot of work, and it still had wooden gutters on it that were being tarred and falling off, and I put a lot of work into that place, I'm telling you. I'm still putting a lot of work into that house. I just paid it off two years ago. I just love this neighborhood. I walk my dog all the time in this neighborhood. I raise my grandkids in this big old house. And it just seems to me like there's always somebody that's trying to make a place or a neighborhood to look like Ballard. Now, is that what we really want here in Everett is for? Now, is that what we really want here in Everett is for that beautiful old neighborhood with lots of great trees and kids playing, to have these horrible buildings that don't look anything like these big old houses? I mean, it just seems to be beyond me, really. And hopefully, you'll really think about what you're doing when you put these buildings or try to put these buildings into this neighborhood. It's a wonderful place to live. I was hoping that I could retire here and I would love to be able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Jean Hewitt?
Hi, my name is Jean Hewitt and I live at three-three-two-four Grand Avenue in the Norton Grand Historic Overlay. And I've been attending and speaking at these Metro Everett meetings since the beginning of the process and I'm still concerned about how this plan affects my neighborhood and my neighbors. I also want to note that I'm speaking for my next-door neighbors, Linda Colombo at three-three-one-six Grand Avenue, and Rebecca and June Chang and their eighteen-month-old daughter Ellie, who was born at Providence right here, who live at thirty-three-ten Grand Avenue, as well as several other Port Gardner neighbors whose names and addresses I'll provide to the planning department via email later on this evening. I'm appreciative of the time that the planning department has spent on creating the plan that will increase and promote density in our city. And I want to thank Alan, Dave, Nils, and Canberra, and all of whom I've had contact with during this process. And Nils has met with me a number of times and I really appreciate his patience. But that being said, after all of my studying, hours of reading, and comparing old and new codes and meeting with Nils, I can say with certainty that the code is difficult for the layperson to understand. It also became clear to me when I walked the neighborhood last month that my neighbors were unaware that they were even in the Metro Everett area. I stood on several doorsteps and heard the same comments, "Oh, I thought that was downtown." And most did not know of any of the changes that are proposed for our neighborhood. I know the planning department has done a great amount of outreach, they really have this time, but even the city has acknowledged there's a serious disconnect in getting information to the citizens and they're instituting a new way to reach out. I also met with the historical commission to inform them of our neighborhoods, to inform them about the changes and to get their feedback and opinions for this meeting, but they too were uncertain of the details of this plan and offered to provide a later, a letter later this month when they get clarification. And I think that's a real important point. There are a number of changes that I disagree with in the new urban residential zone that I believe will damage the character and residential neighbor, nature of my neighborhood. Number one, allowing unlimited density in the Norton Grand Historic Overlay and surrounding streets, which is a change from the current R-three density. I'd like the R-three areas south of Pacific kept at their current density around the overlay. Allowing microhousing and live-work units, these are not acceptable uses for historic areas, especially ones that are experiencing growth, the single-family households with children. I propose leaving the uses unchanged in the historic overlay and the streets surrounding south of Pacific. Heights of eighty-five feet on Rucker across the alley from historic homes and sixty-five feet from the current thirty-five feet across the alley from historic homes on Nassau, the cap should be five stories on Rucker with a fifty-five-foot limit and stay at thirty-five on Nassau. This is a transition area, not an area for sudden dramatic change. And Commissioner Zelinski in January of twenty-seventeen said there should be lower height limits around historic overlays and we appreciate that comment. Fourth, allowing mixed commercial, commercial development on Nassau, this should stay as residential development only, or perhaps commercial with increased noise restrictions and time restrictions. The changes that the planning department proposing may be troubling alone, but the combination of microhousing, unlimited density, increased heights, and lowered parking standards make the lots south of downtown and historic homes irresistible for redevelopment. By allowing the new height limits, six to eight stories across the alley from historic homes with no setback, it renders many of them less desirable to families. To raise the height and limits to this degree will make these historic homes ripe for sale and redevelopment, destroying the history that the city has sought and promised to preserve. Also, by allowing commercial creep in live-work units, it will change the residential nature of our neighborhood. In addition, the historic overlay ordinance is need to be strengthened to give the historical commission more authority to protect historical resources from demolition and have more than an advisory role in design review. Last week before my meeting with Nils, Mary Dean and I looked out over the downtown Everett from the eighth floor of the Wall Street building. I saw parking lots, auto repair shops, welding company, a number of single-story buildings, and dozens of vacant commercial storefronts. This is where the Metro Everett plan needs to stay. There are ways of increasing density in our city without sacrificing our, sacrificing our historic livable residential neighborhoods. I'm almost done. Our neighborhood is a growing, vital community with a number of new families with children who are now calling Everett and the Norton Grand Historic Overlay their home. It would be tragic to see our valuable historic resources threatened. We should learn by the mistakes that Seattle has made in some of their historic neighborhoods. Please table your changes in the Norton Grand Overlay and the surrounding blocks and protect our historic neighborhood. And thank you all very much for your time. Sorry I ran a little over.
Thank you. Marty and Mark Bradley?
Good evening, I'm Marty Bradley, here with my husband Mark. We're at three-one-one-four Grand here in Everett. The home was built in nineteen oh one. All three of our children were born here in Everett. We lived in nearby Arlington and Marysville, but moved here and are enjoying maintaining this home. We're concerned residents of this historic overlay in the city of Everett. We share the same pride as the city celebrates our rich heritage. In this, our hundred-and-twenty-fifth year, as a beautiful place to live and work. I've worked here in Everett for thirty years. We want the same things, for the city to flourish and attract visitors, to preserve and retain the characteristic historic homes and buildings, to retain our current homeowners and loyal residents. Please listen carefully to our concerns and support our collective appeal to you for the preservation of the quiet, safe, and lovely character that is our neighborhood. The unique qualities of a neighborhood where we can walk and drive without the proposed challenges of increased volume of traffic and parking congestion, where we can enjoy the views around us, where we have pride in our residential homes and in our neighbors. We have invested our time and money to be homeowners and residents in the city that you represent and we want to continue to be able to live here. We don't want developers to buy out and tear down even one historic home and replace it with a tall building of up to eight stories. Please work hard to consider our concerns and fill to capacity all the vacant and unfilled commercial and mixed-use space already available throughout the downtown core. Please don't push us out and risk losing the precious gem that is in this historic overlay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mark, did you want to address the planning commission?
No.
Okay, thank you. Steve Fox?
I'm Steve Fox from the Riverside neighborhood, twenty-five-ten Baker Avenue. I'm also concerned about the buffer zone around the historic parts of our city. I think we need some kind of like upside-down cake-shaped height limits around those areas so there's a buffer zone instead of having those historic homes perhaps being like a well shape where you've got tall buildings around it and suddenly you've got these two-story buildings, these historic buildings. So I would suggest that, I don't know if you're applying to vote on this tonight, but I suggest that you delay it a few weeks and see if this can be worked on a little bit more so that we don't have this threat to the historic neighborhood. I'd also like to echo the comment about Ballard. My daughter lives in Ballard and we own a house in Queen Anne and both those areas are growing rapidly and you've got these isolated small houses surrounded by four, three, four, or five-story houses. And I understand the need for more people coming in, but I think we've got room to get a lot of people in the metro part instead of in the neighborhood. I do like to say that I support the majority of this metro plan and thank the planning department for all the hard work they've done. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, those are all the folks we had to sign up this evening. Is there anyone else that wanted to address the planning commission? Okay. Go ahead, sir. Can you make sure you fill out one of the speaker sheets and give it to Kathy, please? And then state your name and address for the record.
Jack O'Donnell, thirty-three-twenty-nine Grand Avenue. For forty years, it's in the Norton Grand Overlay. I too support the Metro Everett in concept. We can't keep paving the countryside, we need a beefier downtown. I am on the Everett Historical Commission and you heard earlier from Jean about that, but we did have a dilemma the other night at our meeting as we grappled with how to, how to write a letter in some kind of recommendation on this because the overlay itself isn't being affected by this, as I understand it. And also heights have been in place along Rucker prior to this anyway. However, you've heard my neighbors, this heights thing is really a problem. Right now, they're building on the thirty-three-hundred block of Rucker on the east side, they tore down a single-family house and they're building what appears to be a fourplex. I'm pretty certain that's what it is. Well, that's, that seems to make sense. Not an eight-story building. Downtown, I counted today, and if we don't count the hospitals, which aren't downtown, we have less than ten buildings and maybe less than that, that are eight stories or higher. Clearly, an eight-story building on Rucker, south of Pacific would be out of place, especially when we don't even have those downtown. And also downtown, look at the new construction that's taken place. The new Elks Building was where a burnout building was. The rest of Library Place is where the old Elks Club, which had been remodeled out of existence fifty years ago, along with two other buildings on that property, that's what was replaced. The Botola over on Pacific replaced a car lot. The art space over on Hoyt replaced a really bad two-story garage. The Marriott across the alley replaced a hole in the ground that had been there for decades. The Hampton Inn replaced one little cement block building in a sea of asphalt. And the Arrow Apartments replaced a parking lot. None of those buildings is, is eight stories or higher, by the way. So just in closing, don't leapfrog out into these neighborhoods. We don't need that kind of development south of Pacific Avenue when we have all the, as others testified, we have all this other vacant space downtown. Now, we do, I will add this, though, we do need to keep in mind that there is the Hewitt Avenue Historic District downtown, buildings that shouldn't be touched, and there are other individual buildings. But whether or not this, these height limits were in effect or going to be in effect, I urge you to look at that and downgrade that. We don't need eight-story buildings on Rucker. South of Pacific Avenue, we don't need six-story buildings or five or whatever it is on Nassau. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Victor Harris, thirty-seventeen Lombard in beautiful downtown Everett. I am a member of the Transportation Advisory Committee. Tonight I do speak as a private citizen. My concern, as always, in this matter relates to the parking. I saw a headline not too long ago, it says, "Lower number of available parking spaces increases traffic congestion." Think about this, when we're trying to remove parking spaces from our, our plans, is it one per one, is it one for ten? I was at my doctor's the other day, besides myself, there was my physician, a floor nurse, a receptionist, a nurse, a patient nurse, a phlebotomist, a radiologist, ten people for one person, and yes, that's every day or every hour, but that means you've got ten people parking there while twenty, thirty people are cycling through for that one physician. So there needs to be, you know, some real large considerations there and you can bet that eighty-seven percent of those employees are driving. Same issue applies to retail. And if we're going to say you can have on-street parking, where were the employees parking? It gets to be a rather confusing situation. There certainly need to be parking for residential off-street parking and for, for retail users and employees. We must relieve congestion resulting from a lack of off-street parking. There's one additional comment here, there's one additional change that I believe is absolutely necessary. A public hearing needs to be held for new projects. Citizens must be heard before approval is granted. We cannot allow the city planner to approve without a public hearing on some of these major projects that are just, that are now at the planner's signature. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Porowski?
My name is Swavik Porowski, Interurban Architects. I work from Seattle, but I have some projects here in Everett. And the conversation has been something that I've been following for the last five years. I, having grown up in historic Warsaw, which was destroyed by World War II and then lovingly restored, love old architecture, love old structure of the cities. And I think that the idea loudly and clearly expressed here today of saving the historic district from the overlay, metro overlay, is extremely sound. However, I urge you, from the bottom of my heart, not to leave the fruits of labor of the planning department and your own, high and dry, in order to slow down the process. This adjustment can be done swiftly. It is not yet a physical thing, it is paper, okay, and some program. However, if we allow this kind of liberum veto where protestation about one area slows the process down for the rest of the metropolitan city, we will end up with Everett with all the grandeur of downtown Fife. So I think that this is the magnificent chance to have a lively, energetic downtown of a city that finally now with Payne Field has its own identity, does not have to hang on to coattails of Seattle Tacoma complex, and lives on its own merit, with all respect to the historic district, which should be protected. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Elizabeth Person?
Hi, I live on twenty, twenty-four Wettmore, but I'm here as a representative for the Everett Bike Walk Group and we sent a letter earlier today. And we had some feedback about the bike portion of the plan and it's great, we just wanted a little more detail and so we've got three, three things we wanted you to consider towards that. And one is to distinguish between short-term and long-term bicycle parking. Short-term being like two hours or less, like a bike rack outside, and then long-term being something that's covered and a little more protected for commuters. for commuters. Secondly, we were hoping that you would specify the location and design requirements in the code and include some best practices to consider bikes. For example, where the facilities are co-located when they're with automobile parking, that there's distinct painting that separates the bikes from the cars, that sort of thing. And we have about five sub-points, but I won't go through those. They're in our letter. And then, lastly, we're hoping that you would consider end-of-trip facilities for commuting bicyclists. And we suggest incentivizing trip facility enhancements such as bike lockers, showers, and dedicated storage for clothing. Buildings that will generate significant numbers of commuters should be required to provide showers and clothing storage for tenants to encourage the, I believe the goal is to have sixteen percent of the transportation of commuters by foot or by bike. So, we think that those improvements would enhance that. Thank you for considering.
Thank you. Liz Vogeli?
Hello. My name is Liz Vogeli. I live at 1103 93rd Street Southwest, so that's way down in the Westmont neighborhood. However, I want to say thank you to the man who spoke over there in Warsaw. Anyways, I've been up in the mayor's office and looking out at all of those buildings that, you know, I have a picture of it. It's white and ugly and, except there's one, I think it's a hotel, maybe, an apartment that has rooftop gardens. So, depending on what you do with this metro plan and how tall the buildings are, I would like to encourage rooftop gardens because that will create housing, right? I mean, the gardens won't, but on the taller high-rises, there will be housing, food, and beauty from all aspects. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wanted to address the planning commission this evening? Please come forward and make sure you fill out one of those signing sheets, but also state your name and address for the record.
Hi there. My name is Frank Fash. I live at 3327 Grand Avenue. Sorry I'm late. I hope that you reconsider this whole concept because it impacts me because I'm going to be right behind the proposed buildings. I have a couple of concerns. One would be parking, overflow parking for the people that live there. I don't know what the parking currently is arranged for. Are they going to be allowed to park in our neighborhood, which would change the whole demeanor of our neighborhood? And the other thing is that this new development would change the whole face of my neighborhood, my community, which certainly would change my view. But, I mean, one of the great things about where I live is the street. It's beautiful. It's probably the prettiest street, I think, in the whole town. We have the trees and everything else, and everybody loves it. And I just want you to protect the historic homes and that whole area. I wish you would reconsider. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Well, thanks, everyone, for coming and testifying this evening. Seeing no one else, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing tonight?
So moved.
Okay, call for the vote.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Yanisak?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVra?
Yes.
Commissioner Zlinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Chair Holland?
Yes.
Well, we've got a lot of testimony this evening. I'm sure we have questions of staff or comments.
I have a question. Could you give the rationale for banning all clinics and social services from the first floor in the whole metro area?
Yes, we had a discussion with the mayor's office, and the direction was that in order to encourage retail and office and restaurant-type uses on the ground floor, that we would have regulations that would not allow additional clinic or social services on the ground floor within the urban mixed zone. Existing clinics, existing social service agencies would be permitted to remain as non-conforming uses, but anything new would have to be on either an upper floor or lower floor, you know, basement or other space than just the ground floor.
Alan, I had emailed you earlier this week regarding, do you know how many existing clinics or, you know, an estimate of existing clinics that would be non-conforming? And then, second question to that is, have these folks been notified? I mean, obviously, there was a moratorium ordinance not allowing medical clinics at all within the downtown passed recently. But I just have a, anyways, if you can answer those, and I might have some additional comments.
There's not been a direct notification to clinics or social service agencies unless they were, you know, just part of the general notification list concerning these recent recommended code changes. As for your question, there are thirty-seven clinic locations in the urban mixed, proposed urban mixed zoning within Metro Everett. Twenty-five of those are on the ground floor and would become non-conforming under the proposed regulation. There are nineteen clinic locations in the urban residential, proposed urban residential zone, and all of them will become non-conforming because they're not in mixed-use buildings. That's the only way that, for example, as you were hearing from some of the folks who spoke tonight, commercial use in an urban residential zone could only occur if it was in a mixed-use building in which at least fifty percent of the building were used for residential. None of the clinics that are in the urban residential area are in mixed-use buildings. They're in a clinic overlay zone. The proposed clinic, excuse me, the clinic overlay zone would be eliminated by this action, and the purpose for that is to encourage more housing in these areas, which were and are currently zoned residential. But it would continue to allow for clinic uses in a mixed-use building. As for the social services, we have within the urban mixed-use zone thirty-nine social service uses, and twenty-five of those are on the ground floor and would become non-conforming uses within the urban mixed zone as proposed.
Thank you. So, I know that non-conforming use could continue to operate, you know, for as long as they want to exist, but there are some issues with that, financing, other things like that. If you're changing, you know, you're selling the building, or if you're changing the, you know, I guess, the user that could go in. I think it's usually not good a year or something like that, that, you know, if you vacated that use for a year, then you can't go back in. It might be two years. I'm not a hundred percent certain about Everett's code. But that's really concerning that the property owners don't know that this proposal has been put before us and that the business owners don't have any notice of it. And anyways, that's just one of my concerns. I just wanted to bring that up to the planning commission, so.
And it seems like about seventy-five of those clinics and social service agencies would all become non-conforming?
Right.
Yeah.
So, are you meaning, so the concern being that if they were to cease in existence and maybe vacate, then the property owner's left with this building that's been used for twenty-five years? Doesn't really, it's retrofitted for medical use, and basically you're forcing the property owner to...
Yeah, find a new, yeah, find a new user, yeah, that can...
Yeah.
So, and is there, just, ground floor would mean, I guess, if you're on a slope and you have uses on a floor, but you're on the street level is not there, but you do have access to another floor that's, I guess, on a slope street? And what, do we have a definition of what a ground floor would be?
We do, and it would be, you know, at the main entrance to the building, which is on the main level. You know, if it was a basement level below that, that was perhaps exposed because of slope, then clinic or social service use could go into that lower level, but not at the main floor.
Even if their main access was from that side street, I guess?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Does the existing historic overlay prevent microhousing?
The historic overlay does not regulate use. The historic overlay regulates design standards. The underlying zoning in the majority, or at least half of the Norton Grand historic overlay zone, multifamily, as it is today, R3 and R4. And so, microhousing, as a definition, we don't have that term in our current code. Multifamily housing is permitted. And so, if somebody wanted to build a multifamily development within the R3 or R4 zone portion of the historic overlay zone, they could. They would just have to comply with the design standards of the overlay zone.
Okay. I was reviewing some historic documents, the Everett Historic Prevention Plan or Preservation Plan from March 2011. Has there been an update of that? Has there been an update since 2011 of that document?
I don't think so.
Okay. Because I was just, you know, I think we all agree that we don't want to lose the historic nature of our neighborhoods and the historic overlays. And I was wondering if it would be maybe a good time to update that document, especially put in some better protections for preventing demolition of historic buildings. And I was also wondering if we could consider putting in a buffer around the historic overlays to prevent some of these concerns around, or to address some of these concerns around building heights. So, is that something that staff could review?
Couple of things that you mentioned there. I think with the historic, I guess, looking at buffers around historic overlay zones, that would be a separate work item. I think in the context of what you're working on tonight and at the next meeting, the metro area, you can recommend changes to the standards that have been proposed here in this draft, or you can ask staff to review what you've heard tonight and come back with some recommendations for changes. But it would be, we would appreciate it if you had some thoughts you could share with us on how you would like us to structure any of those. But with the larger change to, you know, review the preservation of historic buildings, right now, you know, we don't have regulations that prohibit the demolition of an historic building, even if they're on a register, an historic register. And that is something that would be, have to probably come out of either the city council or the mayor's office for, in order for us to put that on our work program. We can relay the sentiment, if that's the sentiment of the commission, you know. As one commissioner, we can pass along that it's the opinion or the request of one commissioner, but in order to, I think, have more of an impact on our work program, the commission would have to probably endorse as a whole.
Okay. I had one more just suggestion. I thought the, well, we were mentioning that the matrix that shows the person commenting the comment and then the staff response. There's been a number of really site-specific conflicts around the code changes or the zone changes. So, it might, it would probably be helpful if we had the site and the comment and the staff response or the staff recommendation or, for, yeah, recommendation for those specific sites. I don't know if it's something we can look at tonight, but that might be a good way to summarize it.
I'm not sure that, you know, most of the specific sites, a lot of those comments are from two years ago, before there was a specific plan in front of you. So, some of that's dated. So, it gives you context of the whole process there. So, most of the specific sites that we've had so far, we've actually responded to all those, other than those that have come in in the last week. So, most of that has been addressed, about concerns about zoning designations. There's no outstanding ones that I'm aware of whatsoever at this point in time. I did want to go back to, just follow up on your historic questions too, because we do have actually a whole chapter in Metro Everett dedicated to historic resources. And so, there are a couple of actions in there, including looking at a historic overlay for the Hewitt Avenue National Historic District and a historic preservation ordinance to consider landmark designation. So, those are definitely strengthening of historic preservation actions. And we haven't heard any input in the formal process whatsoever on that, but all this was reviewed by the Historical Commission a year ago, actually, and supported at that time.
Can I ask about the history or the making of the Norton Grand Historic Overlay, where the boundaries were established, what those parameters were at the time?
Metro, for metro or for the overlay?
No, for the historic overlay itself. Because I do, I notice where I think a lot of the neighbors that we've heard from are concerned is there's that tale of the overlay where it's part of the overlay and it's also part of metro. And, you know, how those, how that part of the neighborhood, I suppose, is being protected, you know? Is it protected under the overlay, or is it subject to the metro plan? And I think in our collective research, we've gained an understanding that maybe the overlay itself doesn't go as far as some would like it to go, to protecting the homes. I think, to be honest, I would be a lot more concerned about my neighbor's house being demoed and a quadplex going in than I would be about some large building going in blocks away, you know, that maybe had a really great restaurant at the ground floor. I think I would prefer that over, you know, something that is completely permissible under the historic overlay, but an eyesore, you know? So, I think there's this, there's this little tale of that historic overlay that's sort of neither here nor there. And I'm wondering where those boundaries are laid, you know? Do we, do we pull the historic overlay boundary back, or do we push that metro boundary forward? And then, you know, where the, where the overlay itself is concerned, how we go about giving that some teeth, you know? Instead of, instead of adjusting our whole metro plan, you know, just giving that little area its own fighting chance by itself, I suppose. But the establishment of that overlay itself is before my time. So, I don't really know where the boundaries were drawn and for what, for what purpose those houses in particular were protected under that overlay. Do you, can you give me any insight?
Yes.
So, the map that's up on the wall or on the screen right now is a compilation of both the, a part of the Norton Grand Historic Overlay right here, but also this is the inventory. The buildings in red are what are considered contributing historic structures at the time of the inventory, and that's also way before my time, almost twenty years ago, maybe, fifteen, twenty years ago, at this point in time. And then, the green ones are non-contributing, and the other properties were vacant at the time of the, of the inventory, at least, that was done. And so, as you can see in this, there was a, you know, significant component of buildings that they considered contributing historic structures to put together the boundary. There also is areas like along, you know, Grand Avenue and Pacific there, where you have, you know, this area where you have a non-contributing and a whole bunch of non-historic as well. So, you know, that boundary was probably drawn mostly to try to create a neighborhood, historic area, rather than to recognize the actual historic structures within that. So, again, yeah, nothing changes within the historic overlay. A lot of the issues about, concerns about what you can do within the historic overlay exists under current code, as proposed code, with respect to multifamily uses. All those, all the uses in the R3, all that stuff can happen, but it has, as Alan mentioned, has to meet the design guidelines. Along Rucker, right now, you can go up to sixty-five feet and actually up to seventy-five feet with a pitched roof already under current code. So, really, what we have in the height standards is really hardly any different than that. And you can only get to those heights. Our base height is five floors. You can only get to the other heights with providing some public benefits. So, we're actually reducing the heights along Rucker rather than increasing them from current within that area. So, I think that Alan knows and can tell you the history of it. The metro boundaries were really based on the multifamily zoning, is what it was. And so, I'm just going to zoom in real quickly at... And so, I'm just going to zoom in real quickly at, at some heights. And this is a little bit a hard way to zoom around, but again, down in this area is, this is Rucker right here. So, you got 65-foot heights along in this area, 35-foot height. And then along Pacific, you got 40-foot. And so, that's again, consistent with everything that we have with our plan, with the exception of over here. And so, we did have taller buildings adjacent to the Providence campus along there. And so, we did have some taller buildings in there. So, so the answer is if you pulled it out of the Metro plan, all the, many of the issues are still going to be there. So, you could still do multifamily. You can still have taller buildings at the edges. This is in a clinic overlay, so you can still do commercial uses with no residential component to it. All those types of concerns are still there. Some will change as a result. I mean, there are some uses, like the micro housing uses, and the unlimited density is new. And will that accelerate people buying houses and trying to demolish them for something that only has the lower heights within the historic overlay itself? That would be, because, because you don't have eight stories within the historic overlay. We're back down to, I want to say, three floors.
Thirty-five feet?
Thirty-five feet within that. Looks like I did pull up that, that map. So, up to three floors within the historic overlay is our proposed height. So, it's the same height.
Thank you for clarifying. I think it's important for us to all hear that out loud, to be on the same page. I, I'm still hearing a lot of fear from that community, but it does sound like the conditions of that community will essentially remain the same as they are now, that the overlay does.
Not at all.
I'm hearing, I'm hearing a lot of, no, no, no. Okay.
Sir? Sir?
Go ahead, go ahead and come up to the podium.
Well, we've actually, we've closed the public testimony.
Oh, sure.
So, if you have certain questions for staff, then it's.
Sure, sure. Follow up with later.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Commissioner. I'd like to get a word in if I could.
Yeah, yeah. Someone else might want to.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a suggestion to offer on the, on the issue of building heights. Doesn't address, micro housing doesn't address potential weaknesses in the existing overlay. It's just on the subject that's before us tonight, which is building heights in the Metro area. My suggestion would be that we limit the heights. It's by understanding that, and correct me if I'm wrong, staff, but the, the overlay currently limits height within the district to three stories. Is that correct?
Thirty-five feet.
Yeah, that's all, three stories roughly. My suggestion would be that for properties that are adjacent to the district, and that would mean across the alley as well as being, sharing a property line, that we limited to four stories, which I think is consistent with what we have on the northern end of the Metro plan around those historic districts at the north end. That would then apply that also to the south end, the Norton Grand Historic District. And if I saw the materials, if I was reading them correctly, on the core residential area to the south of the Metro area, that's 45 feet along Rucker, for instance, is that, that's what it looked like to me when I was looking at those other materials that you included in our package, Alan. It looked like 45 feet is what's along Rucker right now, to the south of the Metro area.
Part of that area is 45 feet, part of that area south of the area here within the core residential area, but outside of Metro is 65 feet too.
I guess my fear there, Commissioner Zelinski, is that we're actually reducing the heights, which is allowed down, actually taking away from what's, you know, the highest and best use for the current property owners. What we have allowed is an increase in building height by a potential of two floors, but I believe we capped it at five. Is that correct on the ones that are adjacent to the overlay along Rucker Avenue there?
Six and eight is what it's.
Eight.
Six and eight.
Six and eight. But we had it at seven there for a bit or something?
We had, we had it both higher at the top and higher at the, the base, and we came down two floors. Yep.
So, I mean, I could probably support something with the five and, you know, whatever you're allowed to do now, I'd hate to see that be reduced for those, those property owners as it exists.
Well, and I wouldn't want to have it less than what you're allowed along, outside the Metro area either, if you're allowed 65 feet.
Right.
I was saying 45 is what I thought I saw in the, in the materials that we got.
Now, we do have a standard within the core residential area under the current regulations that when a taller building, or at least above a certain height, when a building gets above a certain height, that it has to step back as it gets taller. Like above the third floor, it has to step back an additional five feet. Above the fourth floor, it would have to step back an additional five feet. Those are some standards we can bring back to the commission for your consideration so that there's a greater step back. It may not be exactly what we, what I just, the example I just used in the core. But those are some things we could talk about where you have a little bit of a step back when you're abutting an historic overlay zone, for example.
Seems reasonable.
It still would allow for, you know, the heights that are proposed, but with a step back and not right at the setback line.
Previous question on the heights, and we have made some modifications along Rucker lowered. But my point is to meet the growth target and stay in compliance with PSRC, if we start shrinking these floors, what, does that mean we go up someplace else?
No.
Make up for that?
Actually, the, the capacity, and I've got to find it in here. There's a memo from David here that talks about the capacity. We have more capacity than we ever need to comply with our growth targets, whether or not we ever hit even a percentage of that, a small percentage of that. You know, that's going to be way off in the future for years. It's not going to hurt our ability to accommodate the growth targets that are in our comprehensive plan.
Thank you. And Alan, just a quick question. So, the existing heights along this corridor have been in place, I believe you said at the last meeting, since 1995, and we haven't seen any development along that corridor and, you know, or 20 years of the regulations being in place. And I think we all realize this isn't an actual project that's occurring here, and it's actually a non-project action. I just wanted to make sure if that's correct, that those, those heights and those, on that Rucker Avenue there have been there since 95, as you said before.
I think that they were actually reduced from their previous high of 80 feet to the 65 feet when we adopted the core residential standards back in 2008, 2009. So, for the last 10 years or so, it's been lower than it was previous to that time.
Thank you. Yeah, Commissioner Yan, sir?
I guess I need to review the plan a little more closely, but we heard from people from the Norton Grand Neighborhood last, last meeting as well. I think it's important to be responsive, because certainly I know I, and I think probably everybody, is supportive of protecting our historic neighborhoods and historic buildings, historic homes, that sort of thing. But I guess what I'm concerned about that I'm seeing here is, what I feel like I'm hearing from staff, and my understanding of the plan is that, for the most part, nothing's going to change with Metro plan, but that I'm hearing from the neighbors feeling very different about that. And I'm just wondering, it's confusing to me. It seems to me there's somewhere, there's, there's a disconnect. And I don't know if where that is or how that could be, be fixed. Or maybe I'm misunderstanding, but.
Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to try to explain, I guess, and I will ask David to jump in here as well. The existing regulations for height within the historic overlay zone would not change. The existing regulations for permitted uses would change so that in the areas that are within Metro, then, David, can you go back to the map with the contributing structures? So, you see the Metro boundary there with a red dashed line. The area outside of Metro is a single-family zone, R1. The area within Metro is, for the most part, R3 and a little bit of R4 that is within the historic overlay zone. Within those areas, the only thing that would change in the way of development standards for permitted uses really are density, where it would become unlimited density as opposed to the existing regulation, which is one in the R3 zone, one dwelling unit per 1,500 square feet of lot area. So, really what's going to govern how many houses you can get on, or how many units you can get on a piece of property is basically your height envelope, your setbacks, and how much parking you can fit on your, on your property. So, probably not a great deal of change within the overlay zone. What changes is the, and again, this is, on the Rucker Avenue side, current height is 65 feet. We're going from height to stories. Base height that somebody could build without any bonus incentives would be five stories. That's probably less than 65 feet. With bonus incentives, which means some public benefit that would have to be part of the project, that would, could go up to eight stories.
That's the problem.
And that's, that's, that's the difference. And I'm trying to explain to the commission what the difference is between today and what is proposed. And so, just finishing my sentence there.
So, then I guess it sounds to me, if I'm understanding, and I know public media's gone, but, so the neighbors' primary, neighborhood's primary concern is this difference between the five stories and what could potentially go up to eight stories?
I think between 65 feet today and what could be eight stories tomorrow is what I'm hearing.
Okay. Well, I guess that helps to me to, I guess, understand and narrow the issue a little bit. Because I also heard a couple of things that got introduced was the, I hadn't seen that the micro units. I hadn't heard that discussion come up before, as well as, I mean, tearing down historic homes to build tall buildings was another concern expressed. And I guess I'm just trying to figure out what is, I guess, likely imminent or just theoretically possible, or just kind of maybe not a realistic concern. So, I'm going to do some more reading on that. I appreciate it, the help. It seems, I, I think it's important to be responsive to the neighbors and to, in that neighborhood, as well as, you know, to the historical overlay. Anyway, I certainly wouldn't want that to be negatively impacted. I guess it's not, just not clear to me if this is a, what the impact would, could, or may not, may or may not be, I don't know. So, I don't know if anyone.
Could I add one more, more thing? So, it's, it's the proposal of adding incentive floors in that portion of Rucker that is causing a real, some friction. And currently, they're allowed the, the five floors. And the, the proposal is to increase that to eight with incentives being met. So, it, it seems that, you know, your, your suggestion, Commissioner Zelinski, was maybe to create a buffer zone, but maybe a fair approach would be to create some sort of incentive buffer where, where those properties wouldn't have the incentive for extra floors, but they would be able to, to reach their current potential and no higher. And that would be the buffer there.
That's a possibility. You could, you know, you're setting standards with this action across the entire Metro area. If you wanted to make them a little bit different as it relates to a specific area, you can, you can recommend that.
I, I do think that there's a way to, to keep fairness to residents and business owners alike, or, or property owners of, of both kinds. You don't want to remove rights of commercial business owners in favor of anyone. You also don't want to remove rights of residential landowners. I think that maybe the removal of the incentive itself could be a compromise.
And Alan, can you show on the map where that, like geographically where that's the area of such concern? Because I can't see streets or anything on this thing, so I, I can't orient myself exactly.
David, can we put that other map back up there for a moment, please? Okay, so, within the Metro area, so the area that's not in Metro, that, okay, there. So, the area north of the red line that runs east-west is the Rucker Grand Historic Overlay Zone. Not Norton Grand, not Rucker Grand. Norton Grand Historic Overlay Zone that is zoned, for the most part, R3, allows multifamily. And so, the area just to the east, you can see just to the right of the hash-marked area that fronts on Rucker Avenue. Within that area, building heights allowed currently are 65 feet. And what is proposed is five stories with the possibility to go, correct me, David, if I'm wrong, it's five up to seven, from five stories up to eight with the bonus incentives. So, the.
But really, we're talking from Pacific.
To 33rd.
South to.
Well, actually, it would go.
It would go further south, right?
It would go further south, because Metro is on both sides of Rucker, a little bit further south of, of 33rd there, the, can you scroll the map down a little bit just to show how far down Metro goes? Okay, one more block.
Okay. And what's the?
34th is the south limit.
Pacific along Rucker Avenue is really the area we're talking about, that the neighbors have concerns.
Yeah, those three blocks between Pacific and 34th.
And so, on Pacific and Rucker there, you got the gas station and then the green buildings that Central Body works. And so, across the street, there's a, what, a three-story building that was developed, mixed-use building.
Mm-hmm.
What's the, Alan, as far as downtown, a tele place, what are their heights that they developed to? Do you recall how many stories they are?
The, the most, there are two called Patala. The first one at the corner of Pacific and Rucker is three stories of housing over one floor of commercial. So, it's four floors. That's probably in the neighborhood of 45 to 50 feet.
So, just generally within Metro Everett Boundary, what's the tallest building recently that's been constructed?
Probably the other Patala project, which is five stories of housing over a ground floor of retail. So, that's probably in the neighborhood of about, what, 65 feet? 65, 70 feet?
Yeah, Commissioner Lauber?
Yes, and the Nassau side there, what, I know current limits are 35. What is the proposed limit? I don't have the right in front of me. So, the, the east side of Nassau there?
Six floors is the, and I don't know if that's with bonuses or without.
That's with bonuses, three, three without.
Three without and six with bonuses.
So, basically, three is the base, is what's allowed now. And with, with incentives, it could go up to six.
Under the proposal, that's correct.
Okay.
And the current height now is?
Is 35. Right.
So, those are really the two areas that I believe the neighbors have some real concerns about, so far.
Well, once again, I guess the question is, yes, the code allows that, but it's not a guarantee that that's going to happen. It hasn't happened in the last 20 years.
Yeah.
And you're also looking at the whole city, you know, and standards for the whole city. I think we're a little bit, I live in that neighborhood, by the way, but, you know, I just think we're a little bit over-focused on one place. That's my personal opinion.
Sure. Commissioner Tisdale?
When I'm reading the MBA data that came before us, under two, they talk about the transitional zones and to limit it to five stories, a block or two blocks wide. So, not historic, but just around the whole Metro. Have you had conversations with them, or how does that?
That just came in this morning. We haven't had that conversation with the MBA about where that was intended or, you know, exactly what, what they're getting at. We haven't, it just came in this morning and haven't had a chance. We haven't, it just came in this morning, and haven't had a chance to think about that with them.
I was just wondering, because it's kind of talking about what we're all talking about here, and it's, like you said, on a bigger scale than just a neighborhood, because no, no one, I, I want to commend for the record, the staff, for the outreach, and when people say that they didn't know anything about this, I think you guys did a great job of broadcasting. There's multiple meetings, you know, I think, a couple of times with David, I said, this is going to be one of those things where no one will show up till the last minute. And I'm, you know, so we, I, I just want to make sure that, from my position, people have been notified. It's just, so I, next is my subject, I'm sorry, but I'd really like to see, if, if I understand that correctly, Brian Wall, Montlake Terrace City Councilman, had some discussions with me, and David, you might be aware, but that's, that's kind of what they did, and they're new, they tiered it up out of the residential side, and I can't tell you the heights, but I just want to make sure that we, you know, while we're looking at this historical neighborhood, there's other neighborhoods where there's residences right next to it on the east side of the metro area and others.
And I think, if you look at the, and I'm sorry, I didn't bring the electronic version of this tonight, but the, the board map of the proposed heights are up there, but if you look at, actually, all the heights that are on the edge of all the metro, they are exactly that. Neil self-designed all that, but it's up to four floors, three floors, and, and all those things, so transitions to the neighborhood. And so, that was, I think that's there. I think we have addressed that, you know, I still think there's a transition, a good discussion here about the historic neighborhood here in this area that's been the reality for a long period of time, but I think in the other areas, we, we have looked at that.
Thank you.
Can I just follow up on that suggestion there from Commissioner McGinn? Staff, would it, does it sound feasible at all to have, to do something like a, maybe about a reduction in the incentives on an area that borders a historical overlay? Would that, does that even sound practical, or is it, are there other things, other impacts that would have down the, down the stream, or...
It's something you can, you can recommend to, to the city council as part of your action on, on the whole metro plan, would be to have a standard that abutting the historic overlay zone might be, have, might be different than elsewhere similarly zoned properties. They're not abutting, abutting an H-overlay. That's, that's a possibility.
Alan, another point. On that specific area that we're talking about, along Rucker, the topography is pretty steep coming right off of Rucker up to the alley, you know, along that whole area. So, would the floor area would be based off of the Rucker side, it wouldn't be off of the alley side? Is it, is that...
Yeah, it would be off of the sidewalk, right up on the front.
So, four stories might get you equal to the houses that are up on Grand Avenue, and a lot of that just because of the topography?
Perhaps, yeah.
I was trying to get my bearings.
Yeah, and I, didn't we look at a, a couple of years back now, a site-specific developer, proposed developer agreement that talked about raising heights at that location, and there, I think there was some modeling that was done on that, and...
Right, there was a proposal to amend the height standards on the block between Pacific and 32nd, and the commission at that time decided not to make a change.
Thank you.
We also did the height modeling of this area, and we identified that, and based on the earlier versions of this, and that was some of the feedback that the planning commission had, based on public input, too, is that, that caused us to reduce the heights along Rucker in this area earlier, too?
Earlier in this process?
Yes, correct. Yeah, we've, we've, we've done it on two occasions now.
Another follow-up on the, on the topic here about the area bordering the historic overlay with the incentives for public benefit. Would there be a public input process for that determination, if there were to be a proposal from, from somebody after all this time, for additional public input, for the neighbors, to look at the specific impact and to be heard, and...
Anywhere within metro where there would be a proposal to increase building height based upon public benefit would be a public review process, a notice to neighbors within 150 feet and posted on the property.
Well, as Commissioner Tisdale said, I just wanted to thank staff for all your hard work and public outreach. It's, it's not easy to get the public involved, and I appreciate everyone that's come and testified tonight, and it's been a long journey, a lot of hard work, and there's obviously a lot of hard decisions that have to be made in the planning process, and I think it's equitable across the board, and I just want to say that I support what staff has provided us tonight, except for the medical clinics prohibited along the ground floor, so...
I want to second that. I support most of it, except for the medical clinics.
Does that have any more input about what the, I mean, the mayor, you said that came from the mayor's office?
Correct.
Was the, did someone ask already what the issue was with that, or what the...
He asked.
Well, I, I think that we had those prior commission meetings that related to methadone clinics that were determined by the federal government to be considered just a standard medical clinic, and they're protected under the Disabilities Act, so, and then a moratorium was placed within the B3 zone to allow any clinics at this time, so that's, and they have nine months to, the council has nine months to consider that, and this would be part of that consideration to eliminate the moratorium at this time, subject to design standard, or, you know, standard that it, they can't be on the ground floor of, within, within metro, so, any medical clinic, so. And I, and again, I just, for business owners not being aware of, of that, and, and the owners of the property also not being aware of that, I just don't think that's a, something that I could support in this particular draft, so...
Are we done with that subject?
Sure.
Good. Alan, there's a couple in here tonight, and they talk about the jogs in the map, the boundaries, and I know that we did something with the Jucket property, and this one here is from Dykes and Ehrlichman talks about Howie's property, but I thought that change had already been made, but he's talking about parking here.
Now, he's wanting to be, Mr. Ehrlichman has requested that the parking area, and that's what David's putting up on the screen now, parking area A and parking area B, the area to the inside of the map is parking area A, the one with the red cross hatching is, is parking area B, and can you, David, point out where Mr. Bargreen's property is? Right there. Mr. Bargreen's property is right there in parking area B, and Mr. Ehrlichman has asked that to be added to parking area A, which would have a slightly lower parking ratio requirement for multifamily housing, and no parking requirement for non-residential use.
That's that little piece where that credit union...
No, it's not that far to the west. That's just, or, that's not that far to the north. This is just between Nor, excuse me, Hewitt and California. It's south of Sound Machine Shop, north of the railroad track.
Okay, gotcha. Right by the brewery.
Yeah.
So, then, on this Crass and Harris cloud, what, that's another one of those areas where we went over a block, and down a block, and back a block, and...
Yeah, David's going to pull that one up there.
Is, yeah. This area right here.
Yeah, so that is designated, let's see, that's urban residential on the north part of the block, and urban mixed on the Hewitt Avenue frontages.
With the urban residential mixed, so, commercial uses are allowed on the ground floor, but it requires a residential component to it. So, it's an urban residential zone, all these areas with the blue lines, including on California and up Cedar Street, and even along Everett Avenue there, there's residential that allows some commercial uses on the ground floor, if at least 50% of the floor area is in residential.
But when we're mixing manufacturing and housing...
There's no manufacturing in this area currently. I think there's one piece of property that's an extension beyond the alley, but this is mostly all houses and vacant land in that area right now. There's no manufacturing in there.
So, this is one you just got today, so you guys will review that and get back to us.
Well, we do have eight resolutions before us this evening, and unless there's some direction for staff to do some additional analysis on any portion of these eight items, I would entertain some type of motion on these items, so. I know the staff's looking for direction or a recommendation on these things, and I know we had some good discussion on that, so it's really, Commissioner Zelinski?
Yes, if I understood staff correctly earlier, they're, they're open to making some modifications before we take votes, and specifically on the question of building heights around the historic districts. So, I'd like to see a modification to both the metro plan and the development standards implementing it on building heights that are consistent with the discussion we've had, which is to limit the maximum allowable height for properties adjacent to the historic district to something no greater than what is currently allowed under the existing regulations.
Any additional comments on that?
Yeah, I support that recommendation. I think it could also be expanded to include the recommendation from the master builders, describing it as a transition or buffer zone extending to single-family neighborhoods, so, adjacent to historic overlay and also the single-family residence.
I also support that recommendation.
David, could you maybe describe again, like, those, what you consider we've, the staff and planning commissioners considered those transition areas along the perimeters adjacent, and maybe describe again what the existing land use is, and what their height allowances are? Because I think they're pretty consistent in what's currently allowed.
Right.
I, I know over in the, adjacent along Rucker and things like that, that there's a proposal for the six to the eight, but I think in that north end and on the east end, there's not much of a proposed change. Is that correct, or maybe I'm mistaken?
That's, that's correct. We did design this so that they step, building heights, permitted building heights stepped down as you got out to the edges, particularly with the single-family zoned areas, R2 and the Bayside and Riverside neighborhoods, R1, for the most part, in the Port Gardner neighborhood, and this map unfortunately is sideways, but...
If I turn the computer, well, no, it doesn't work that way for you, does it?
But, so, the, the three floors and four floors are basically what we have around the perimeter of the majority of the metro area where it runs into single-family neighborhoods, R2 and R1 zones in particular. The areas where, you know, runs up against industrial land or the freeway, we did not step it down nearly to that extent. The majority of the taller buildings would be permitted in the core of downtown and around Everett Station, up to 25 stories with incentives, I think it was 12 stories without any added incentives, and then stepping down, both in the minimum, or, excuse me, in the base heights without incentives, and the incentive heights, they step down as you got closer to the edges. So, this is the map that, and David, maybe there's something in the commission's packet on this, or...
Well, I know we looked at this extent, you know, it's just, you take bits and pieces over a two-year period, and then you kind of lose what your thoughts were on that, and then, obviously, when we get to the public hearing, these topics come up again, but I, I believe staff did a, a great job of marrying the existing heights to what adjacent to, I think they were expanded just a little bit, as far as the boundary and all that, but marrying them what the existing is, and then adjacent to that single family, so maybe, and I know you had an exhibit that showed that at one time.
Right.
So, maybe that would be beneficial if we don't make a recommendation tonight, which doesn't sound like the commission is looking to do that this evening, to maybe bring that back, and we can just have a discussion on...
So, in this, so this is map, this is the incentive height map, so map 20-6 in chapter 20 of the development regulations, but it's, actually, it shows up better on your screen than what I'm seeing here, but, so, around the periphery, we actually don't have some incentive heights either, so we just have the base heights. You can see there's nothing here, the metro boundary is right there, so there's no incentive heights there, so perhaps one of the things we can look at is...
Is moving that.
Bringing that into some of the other areas that you're concerned about, too, is taking that incentive height out is, is one of our options in there, but that's exactly what we did, so, adjacent to the other historic overlays, but really, it wasn't about historic overlays, it was about the single-family neighborhoods and transition. But it's also on the north side, so it was about sun shading as well. We didn't want to have tall buildings on the north end of Metro Everett, so that was one of the design ideas of having lower buildings at the north end of Metro Everett as well.
Can I ask, in addition to building heights along the edges bordering residential areas, I'm assuming there would still be some requirements for yard setback, or, yards, but setback or landscaping, as far as, I mean, you're not going to have a, literally a five-story building buttered right up against a residence.
There, there are some setbacks, they're not, not large. You would not, especially if you're backing up to an alley, you wouldn't have a landscape buffer, because that's where all the cars are supposed to go, is off of the back, out of the alleys, into the backside of their buildings, and not coming in off of the curb, with curb cuts on the street. And so, your setbacks at upper stories, we can have a step back above, as I mentioned earlier, above a second or a third floor, you can do something like that. Or you could just, you know, keep it at the current height standard and not, not change anything.
And just as a refresher of all the public comments we got, I mean, that was one of the things, especially at the developers' meeting, that, and the people that are actually going to be providing housing in the city, that they were strongly against having these design of buildings that were inflexible, but there is still some design standards in the code that does say, I think, when you get above six, you got to step back some, so it's, you know, if you're trying to build on the property line, so, I mean, those things are all taken into consideration as, as part of the design standards, based on the feedback that we've gotten from the development community as well, so, to not make these buildings inflexible, but, so...
We can come back with some, some options for you. I think we've heard what you're saying, I think we can bring you some options on these building heights. I think for tonight, one thing that would be nice, I guess, if the issues really appear to be around the building heights, if, if this is the issue that you want to have us bring you some more options, maybe you could just touch on some of these other subjects, not necessarily getting into the resolution and making any motions, but just letting us know if you're largely not concerned about some of these other changes, that we won't have to deal with those on the 19th, but we can just focus on the issues that we've discussed tonight, and look forward to perhaps an adoption of all of the other resolutions on the 19th, and whatever changes you would make regarding primarily item three, the development regulations.
The one public testimony we did get tonight, Alan, was... The one public testimony we did get tonight, Alan, was related to design standards for, and maybe even density incentives for, or not density incentives, I don't know, some kind of the incentive program to providing stuff for bicyclists. And I don't recall in the, in the new off-street parking regs, if there was any specific design standards related to bicycle facilities. I know that you're able to get a bonus if you provided them or something like that, if I recall correctly, so.
Yeah, we'll take another look at that letter and our current regulations, and we can bring something back for you, at least an explanation of whether or not we think we're there already, or if, if more detail might be needed.
Thank you.
If I could come, I was intrigued a little bit by that letter and the presentation about, I hadn't conceived the idea between a bike rack for maybe short-term storage as opposed to long-term. I do think one of the things we're trying to encourage is maybe people don't have cars at all and are relying on that bike for, you know, exclusive, you having, it would be nice to have like a locker kind of situation. I know I've seen that at the transit center.
Yeah, and I've seen regulations to where, you know, if you're providing covered structure, covered parking, that you need to provide covered bicycle parking as well. So, I mean, there's just these little things that you can put in there to, you know, help, you know, instead of just having completely outdoor, you know, storage and all that, so.
You said that last time.
I just wanted to mention that I also share the reservations that some of the other commissioners have about the blanket prohibition on ground floor. Your original proposal, I thought, made sense, where you were limiting it to the TOD streets and the pedestrian-oriented streets.
Right. And we can, if that's something that you would like to recommend as an alternative to what's in the draft, that's certainly a prerogative.
Any other, go ahead.
Parking. It's not so much the parking, but I would use the new Manor Hardware and McDougall, and right across the alley, Ed is putting up the new Hope Works property. And it's a good example of, you know, Manor Hardware gets two to three semi-trucks a day in a loadout, and most of those contractors either have a trailer or a box truck. And I, I just, I hope we've taken that into account, because when we start mixing residential and commercial, and again, I would go to South Lake Union, and hopefully that never turns into South Lake Union, but a couple of my law buddies down there, they have to go pick their own office supplies up because they can't deliver, because they can't get those trucks from Office Depot or, or that on, and some of their UPS packages, they have to go pick them up. And so I, I hope we're, we're looking at that.
The parking chapter does have loading standards for citywide in, in that industrial area, and I think David had a comment.
It's more, not so much, I just use that as an example, but that same thing could happen in the metro area. And, so I, I hope we're looking at, and I'm not saying we didn't. I'm with all, all my colleagues here that, that I think a yeoman's job's been done on this, but sometimes parking is one of those things that gets looked at when it's, when it becomes a mess, and then it's too, then it's too late, so.
Rooftop drone delivery.
Part of the deal. Anyway.
Just as a reminder for kind of a change in uses down the road because of the, partly the Everett Station light rail, is that we've identified more the long-term, the industrial nature to be at 33rd and South along McDougall. So, so the property to the north is kind of anticipated a transition away from the freight. Doesn't mean you still don't need to move trucks through there for those folks that are south of that, but we do see that transitioning happening over the next 15, 20 years.
What I'm looking at freight is a box truck from Office Depot that's delivering copy paper to a law office or a doctor's clinic or whatever. You know, I use semis in the, in the Manor Hardware, because that's more of the industrial. But it's, it's, I mean, you guys have seen it happen someplace else. Let's, let's make sure we're not, we got wide cutouts, or, you know, there is truly truck parking only that doesn't get toppled up because there's not enough enforcement and, and those kinds of things.
Yeah, there are loading standards within the parking chapter.
I know that.
Any other direction for staff this evening, or comments on the plan?
I guess I just want to say one thing. I really appreciate staff putting together this spreadsheet of all the public comments and responses. That is very helpful. One thing I really appreciate about the process is what I view as good public input, and I think very good response from staff, very responsive to suggestions, inputs, questions, concerns raised. I just think that's something that I, I find really, that I really appreciate about the process that's been going on. I haven't had a chance to look at these letters that just were provided tonight, but I do hope that if there are specific concerns raised, if it's something that could be easily addressed, perhaps, I don't know, you know, the Bargreen request about, it looks like it might just be a simple little change. I don't know, I haven't looked at it closely, but I do hope that we, that commission can, or the commission, that the staff can continue to be responsive to that, because I think that's what makes this process strong, so.
Yeah.
I would encourage a good follow-up on, on these if we can.
Yeah. And maybe some of them have already been addressed in the plan, so, and I haven't had an opportunity to review all that either, just received it, so. Alan or David, would you, if, if, in advance of our next meeting, if somebody had concerns about some of the public test, some of the written stuff that we got here, to just email you directly individually?
Yeah, that would be fine. I think what we'll do then is make sure that the commission, all the commission gets a copy of that email and the response then.
Okay.
To be, to be pretty candid, however, though, our ability to respond to things that continue to come in is challenged. So what we have in up to now and through the hearing will be a lot easier for us to respond to at this point for the commission's action, but this process is ongoing before, I guess, the city council, so no matter what, people have those concerns, we'll pass them on to you. Maybe they could be addressed ad hoc, and then they, or they could be addressed by the city council in the next phase of the process. So I don't want to discourage it, I just don't want to anticipate if we get a whole bunch of new subjects two weeks from now, on the day of the meeting, that we're going to be able to respond to that. It's just not realistic, so.
Great point, and understood. I was just thinking about some of the stuff we got tonight, but I, I think you've done a great job in addressing all the concerns over a number of meetings in a couple of years now, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments for staff? Any additional items, other business tonight, Alan, or did you want us to do anything on any of these resos tonight, or no, just bring it all back as one package?
I think, I think what I'm hearing is that unless you have concerns for, between now and two weeks from tonight, that the main focus would be on item three, the development regulations. And all the discussion that's occurred tonight was around those, and so we can bring back some, some suggestions or options for you. We'll hope to do that within about a week, so that you've got a little time to think about that before the next hearing in two weeks. But, yeah, we're, we're winding down here, so it sounds as though that's the, the focus between now and two weeks from tonight. The rest of this, we're not hearing either from the public or from the commission that there's any concerns.
Great. Yeah, so I believe it was the, obviously, the, the height issue, and we talked a little bit about the bicycle parking, and was there any other topics? Commissioner Zelinski?
Would it be an onerous job to get an idea of how many non-conforming uses would be created by the, the proposal on the no-ground-floor clinics?
Yes, I just did that, and I can, and I'll put it in writing for your meeting next time.
Great.
The PD letter, we kind of didn't, is that anything we need to be aware of, or is that just information to us?
The which letter?
The PUD letter that we received today.
No, that, that's not a substantive letter. I think it was more that they're willing to work with us.
Yeah, that's how I took it.
Just as development continues and densities increase in downtown, it's just more of a challenge for them, but they're, they're pretty good about working with our public works folks.
So we're going to address all those letters and the height stuff? That, that's what we're moving forward on?
We will review all the letters. We may not have a response to all of them, but we will have comments for you.
Thank you.
And Chair Holland, the third thing was the ground floor, medical and office things.
Right, yeah. Well, was there any other business for us tonight then, Alan?
No other business for tonight.
Okay, great, thank you. I guess we're adjourned.
Good meeting.